Okay.
All right, it's 7:39 PM, August 25th, 2020. I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present are Doug Roberts, Bob Shabbitt, Lori Semperban, and myself. No public hearings tonight, so we'll go straight to item D, new business. Regulation discussion on livestock, section 7.07.03 out of our zoning regulations.
So, um, I wanted to put this on here because we've got a little bit of a... We're looking for some guidance. Basically, the regulations that are written now, which deal with folks who ask the town if they can have, basically, like, they want to keep backyard hens, for example, are a little bit cumbersome, confusing, and I think can be interpreted in both directions, which make them complicated. I'm looking for, basically, and switching gears a little bit because we don't have the full commission, this may be something that we decide to send out and get comments back individually via email, but I'm basically looking for the commission to give us some guidance on the interpretation and whether or not they feel the intent of what's written should allow somebody on a standard lot to have what is defined as an animal unit or not. I can share the screen if you want to look at it now. I can send it out.
I've got it.
Okay, you've got it.
I've got it right in front of me. You probably should put it up for people that don't, but I'm looking at... We're talking about 7.07.03, correct?
Yes.
And to me, to me, that's written for people that are doing 4-H or advocational livestock. That's for people that are... have a child in a 4-H program or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Say that's correct?
Yeah, so, and I see that part. So, that's where you're reading, "Nothing in these regulations shall prevent the keeping and raising of livestock."
Yes, provided it's for a legitimate advocational program. And, you know, it's saying one animal per 80,000 square feet of land. So, let's see, what's an acre? Forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet in an acre? So, they're asking for just under two acres here to have them, and they're defining the animal units as in the bullet points below.
Right.
And obviously, no roosters or anything like that. So, it seems to me that there was some thought in it. It's relatively clear, so what are we wondering? Like, if people just want chickens to raise eggs, that it doesn't work with this, or?
So, um, yeah, I mean, I think the piece to it was advocational livestock for personal use, youth, or for youth projects. Eighty thousand square feet is not a number that's tied to our... well, I suppose it... I don't know what that roughs out to with acreage.
Probably 1.8, something like that.
Yeah, because an acre is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. So, they're saying you need a pretty substantial piece of land to do this.
Well, isn't our zoning 1.84 acres, and isn't that 1.84 acres?
So, that's what it is now, yeah. Our minimum lot size in that, in the R-zone, is the 1.84.
So, if you're in a neighborhood that was built before those regs, you might have a lot that's not big enough. And how do you determine what's advocational for personal use? What does that mean?
Read above it, 7.07.02, Lori. That's saying you need five acres if you want to keep and raise livestock, other than horses and poultry for the owner's personal use.
Right, so...
It's advocational purpose. They reduce the acreage.
So, yeah, if you... if it's for advocational use, which, which, set aside, how do we define what it is, you know?
That's what I'm asking, yeah.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the meaning of the word advocational?
Well, I, I can scroll up. Let me see. I don't know if we define it in the regs. Doesn't look like it.
Well, one, one thing that I would like to mention, isn't it mentioned in the regs? I know it was when the discussion came about a number of years ago that any farm animal or such needed to be kept 50 feet from the adjoining property line?
Um, there are some regulations that talk about, like, structures, like barns and manure piles and things like that. But, you know, we've, we get this question very frequently. We have people that, you know, have, you know, are finding it difficult to pay rent to have a horse, and they want to bring their horse home, and they have an acre and a half, and, you know, so, I guess I don't necessarily have an opinion either way. But I think that, you know, the way it's been done historically is sort of, eh, it's just, you know, the kid wants to have have this pet and raise it. It's not a big deal, but, you know, when someone calls to complain, I can't tell them, oh, it's just a kid. It's not a big deal, you know? We have to have something a little more concrete, so if the commission, if that's the read and we're comfortable with, you know, what it says, then, then we'll proceed as normal. I guess I was just, you know, it's a little shaky when you talk about advocational and personal use.
Well, here's what advocational, I just looked it up. It means an activity taken up in addition to one's regular work or profession, usually for enjoyment, a hobby.
So, do you have a minimum?
These, these two regs together, then, and I believe I remember when this was passed, but if you have 1.84 acres, you can have a few chickens, and I guess a horse. It seemed like a small lot, but but what about properties that are smaller than that? We do have properties smaller than that in town.
Well, I was just gonna say, how do you handle non-conforming lots?
Well, at some point, you hit a thing that's not right for the animals either. Certain animals require a certain amount of space to graze and roam and to be kept properly and safely and happily. And, you know, that's probably why there's some consideration on the size of the lot here.
Right. Well, one, one of the things, I would recuse myself from any vote tonight. Basically, I'm part of the Historic District Commission, and this was generated... This quarry was generated by the Historic District Commission on two non-conforming lots in the Historic District. One is, one is .8 and one is .6 acres. And the complaint was made to us that the chickens are within, you know, 10 feet of the window of the next property. And, you know, there's, and there's a smell. I, I get it. And the lots are non-conforming. I think personally, just in discussion, I think that's the nail that needs to be hit on the head. That it's, it's a non-conforming lot. It doesn't meet with what we allow animals on.
And I think if Bob is recusing himself, we would have to postpone it to a later meeting, yeah.
I agree.
I mean, I'm not really, I guess what I was looking for, just the discussion, I mean, it sounds to me like there's a, it's, it's, there's a fair amount of, you guys are fairly unified in the way that you're reading it and the interpretation, and so advocational and personal use, you know, I don't, I don't think, you know, kind of finishing the sentence a little bit, even if we don't need to debate the use of the animal or the reason it's there, because we don't have the 80,000.
I, I, that's my thought. Mike, you know what? I'm the last guy that wants to give people a hard time about having a couple of chickens or anything, but, you know, you gotta, you gotta look at the reality. Some of these animals need some space, and, you know, the odors that come off of them and just the health issues. That's why cities decades ago stopped a lot of this, because people had them on tiny, like, quarter-acre lots and...
Yeah.
Just, you know, they, they require care and sanitary conditions and...
Yeah, I'm all for having, I'm all for having a discussion tonight and just laying out the facts, as long as we don't have to vote. I'll, you know, I'm all in on just understanding what the regulations say now, and I think that's enough in that particular situation.
So, I just have a comment. If, if somebody's having financial hardship because of this COVID, I would think we'd be able to relax whatever regulations are for some determined, predetermined amount of time until we get out of this mess, and then basically revert back to our zoning regs.
Does that create problems elsewhere, though?
How do you explain that? How do you explain that to somebody that has too many chickens 10 feet from their window of their house?
Yeah, it looks like we don't know anything about it, is what it looks like.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
There are some towns that have, have adjusted their, some certain process that they have because of this and have... It's essentially a discussion that the commission has, and then they basically come to a consensus of, you know, during this time, because, because of the following reasons, we would only, we only want staff prioritizing violations that are, deal with extreme public health and safety until we feel that it's, you know, appropriate for these things to be happening and for staff to be doing inspections, or whatever. I mean, some towns have done that. I, we wouldn't necessarily advertise it. If you guys went in that direction, we would sort of say, if they brought it up to us and said, geez, you know, I understand I got this notice, but because of this, this, and this, you know, we're both out of work. I don't have the money, we might then say, there's something that, you know, we can kind of relax the timeframes for compliance.
But what does that do for the guy that's having to deal with the chicken smell in his bedroom? I mean, you know, that's, right, and, and we don't know that the people that have these chickens on non-conforming lots are in that situation, and I'm not trying to, you know, to say we shouldn't be sympathetic to people in those situations, but I think in some ways, we're advocating our responsibility if, if we do that just because we don't want to deal with it right now. I, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I think, you know, we're, we're happy to move forward with it, and the reason, I mean, it's partly on the agenda because of the complaints from the HGC, but it's, it's more on the agenda because this is a question that has come up. In the time that I've been in Wellington, this is probably one of the most popular inquiries we get. People that want to have, oh, my kids want to have this, or, you know, whatever, and so I wanted to make sure that we weren't interpreting it incorrectly.
Well, rooster complaints are relatively common, too, we've had over the years, and like, you know, it seems whenever, like, you know, they go out to look for the rooster, it wasn't there, but everybody would hear. I remember, like, people with that would... Yeah, it's pretty obvious when there's a rooster. You can hear it, you know?
Right, yeah, no, we, we had, we have had a number of these complaints, and, you know, one came up not long ago. The family, you know, it was the kids' pets. They couldn't have a dog, and they didn't know where, they couldn't get rid of them to someone that would let them, the kids come visit. It was the whole nine yards, so I thought, you know, let's just make sure we're all on the same page, so I just threw it on here. So, I, I'm pretty comfortable that you guys have a consensus, so we're gonna keep reading the reg the way we have been. So, so we'll, we're gonna, I think, as far as I'm concerned, we're good.
All right.
So, if we move on to the next piece, which was basically the sign regs, I just wanted to give you a quick update. You know, we had talked a while back about updating some of the sections. The sign regs, we've, are basically what we started on. We, we had held off because we thought, you know, we'd have meetings in person. It would be easier then, but who knows? So, Ashley has been kind of looking at them. We've been looking at some other towns. We kind of have three goals to simplify the regulation overall. We want to fix the size allowance, because if you've all seen the Dunkin' Donuts sign, it's crazy. So, you know, I want to do that, and then the other thing is that there is a Supreme Court case, Reed versus Gilbert, which says sign regulations have to be content neutral, which means you can't regulate basically what it says or who is saying it. And our regs are not fully content neutral. There, there are some things we need to adjust. So, those are the three goals that we have. I would say, if you have any thoughts, you know, you can send them to us or whatever, and once we have some, some type of a working draft that we think is worth discussion, you obviously will see it again. But I just wanted to kind of put that on your radar and let you know that we're starting with that. The other reason why, frankly, it's important to me is that, you know, Love's will be coming in for approval to the sign regs. That was not part of their approval, and I want to make sure that our regs are, are right where they need to be so that we don't have to be in a situation where we're evaluating an application that we don't think is appropriate, because the regs weren't tight.
Mike, can, can you elaborate on what content neutral actually means?
Yep.
And where we go astray from that?
So, I don't have all my stuff in front of me to tell you exactly where, but basically, we have some, I think the regs are set up to, to regulate uses, and you can't, you can't regulate a sign differently and basically say that a church or a, a community group can have a sign that's X, Y, and Z, but FedEx can't, because you're regulating the who. You know, we're basically, we have to know who that person is before we can tell them what signage they have. So, what we need to do is basically regulate signage based on zone and say, in these zones, this type of sign is appropriate, so we don't care who puts it up. And in the residential zones, you know, we think these types of signs are appropriate, and then, you know, for the outliers, for the few commercial businesses that are in residential zones, maybe we set up a process by which they come in for a permit here, and that way there, they don't get stuck as being non-conforming and have to deal with some little piddly sign. But the Reed case was basically, came out of Arizona, and it was a church, and the town let the church put up signs on Sundays, said they were having mass in a local hall, because they didn't have their own parish building, and some of the businesses got mad, and it turned into this huge case and, and went all the way up the Supreme Court, because a bunch of big money groups from other parts of the country decided to foot the bill for the church. So, we gotta, we gotta work on that since we're looking at it. And the other thing that I, I want to contemplate a little bit is, if somebody's putting up a sign, you know, like, for example, Phelps Plaza, if they have a new tenant that's putting up a brand-new sign, you know, I don't think that needs to come to the commission for approval if it's going on the building. So, we kind of want to streamline the process a little bit, but we haven't kind of gotten that far yet, so we'll put together a draft for some discussion.
Okay. It does make sense that we address these, though. We've been talking about them for over a decade doing something, so...
Yeah. I, I'm, we don't have a lot of business in town, but, you know, I want to move a little bit in the direction of making things a lot more easier and more streamlined, so that when they want to do things, they don't just say, well, that's too complicated. I don't want to bother. So, that's, I think the signage stuff, the regs are a little complicated, and it's a little daunting for them to try to do it themselves. So, I'd like to kind of move that in a, to a direction that makes it much easier for them to understand without needing an attorney or a, you know, some professional.
Well, it makes it easier on you also.
Yeah, that's a benefit.
Well, yeah, it is.
So, that's all I have for that.
That's good. All right, so that leaves us to approval of minutes from May 19th, 2020. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes, and any comments or changes? Would someone like to make a motion?
No comments from Doug. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, I'm not sure I heard Bob. He's out there somewhere.
Hi.
All right, good.
I'm there.
Okay, great. All right, so that carries. Correspondence?
Um, I may have something that qualifies as correspondence, but I'll cover it under staff report.
Okay. Item H, public comment. The commission will hear brief comments at this time from anyone wishing to speak. No business can be conducted here, nor can any comments be made about any items on the agenda. Anyone from the public? I thought I saw Ralph out there.
Yeah, he was here, but he's no longer here.
Okay.
He had emailed me about the, the discussion for the sign regs.
Okay.
So, it may just be he was...
I would think Ralph has a lot to say about the signs, but... All right.
I'm sure he does.
Well, I hope so. Yeah, he has good input. Uh, let's see, H, no, I, staff report and discussion, item one, Love's update.
Yeah, so, just a quick update. This is really the meat of why I wanted to get everybody together. We've received a plan set digitally of their modifications following their, the commission's approval, basically going through and doing things like adding the No-Turn Island and updating some of those other things. Your approval basically gave staff and our attorney the ability to go through it and make, and basically, if everything is as it's supposed to be, you know, let the MyLars get, get created and, and not have to come back to the commission just to contemplate the changes that you required they make. After going through the plans, all of the changes are basically just the things we asked them to do. So, so I've gone over it with Ken and looked at it, and we're comfortable that, you know, we don't feel that there's anything additional. They've done everything the way that we asked them to, and so I'm sort of telling you that unless you are unhappy about it, we're not going to bring them back to you just to go through that. I, I think that the, the only change that is, is the biggest change to the plans that you'll notice if you look at them quickly, if you took a quick glance at them, but I think as a net benefit is they have decided to abandon the plan to build a tire-changing building.
That's not a bad thing for us.
No, no, I, I completely agree. So, I think that bringing them before the commission to try to have you guys go through and pretend, and frankly, everybody in the area that participated is, you know, gonna get brought out again, and I don't want to create this false sense of they're back again for more, you know, process. I see it as a benefit to the town if they abandon that building and don't build.
You're not gonna hear air ranches. You're not gonna hear things like that. That's, that's a good thing for the people around.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, basically, what they're, what they've done is they're not gonna build the building. They're gonna relocate the scale that was already there, and then just where the building was supposed to be, it's gonna be a parking space. So, I, I agree. I see that as a net benefit to the town, because that's, you know, we're not gonna have tires that they're gonna have to be taking off-site, you know, all those things. I think, I think it's a, a clear positive. So, unless that changes something for you and you feel like you need to see it, you know, we're gonna move it forward. The only other piece related to that is that we've identified that our permitting system, the way it was set up, all of the permits get printed with a footer that basically says if, if work is not completed within six months, the permit is void. That comes from the building code, and they got that on their permit and have been shaking in their boots figuring out, based on the fact that the DEP was shut down because of COVID, how they were gonna get started within six months. And so, we sent everything to our attorney, and he basically said, that six-month thing is, is not applicable. This approval is garnered, is, is instructed by statute, and that six-month timeframe comes out of the building code for building permits. So, we have requirements in our regs for special permit activities, but it's not, it's not, in certain cases, it's 12 months, and in others, it's 24. It's not six. So, I'm just letting you know that, that we've determined that that was basically an error on the permit systems and part, and we're gonna be adjusting that.
Okay, that's, that sounds all right.
They, they have provided us with their... Oh, I forget what the name of the plan is. It was submitted to me and Brian Murphy by their wetland scientist, so they provided that, which is part, which required, and have been basically providing all the documentation that they, that they have to. They do intend on getting started in the spring. That is their plan right now.
So, the, the plan is to actually begin building something in the spring, finally?
So, yeah, we have a little bit of work to do on our end, because we have to figure out the legal process by which the town hires a clerk of the works that will be paid for by Love's to monitor the project, and that's gonna be something that we have to kind of navigate. We're gonna have to select someone, figure out the payment process so that it's not basically, you know, there's no risk to the town. So, this winter, we'll be focusing on that, but their goal right now is, yeah. They, they brought this up to us because they didn't want to be forced to have to strip the site in the fall to get into the six months and then leave it open all winter, just to get into the six-month timeframe. So, that's how the conversation started, but they fully intend to move forward in, in the spring.
So, does that mean they got their final approval for their waste leachate plan?
I think that, that they've gotten whatever document or, or finding comes from the state that tells them that it's imminent.
Yep.
I haven't talked to Greg in a while. I don't know exactly where that stands, but my impression was they felt that they'd have everything else finished.
Yeah, because that seemed to be the one loose end yet that they needed to tie up.
Yeah. So, and I, and I can certainly reach out to him, so that when we do get together again, I'll have an update on that. The other, the other stuff I wanted to touch base with you on, our office submitted a grant application to the Department of Housing to receive funding for an affordable housing, to develop affordable housing plan. All towns are required by state statute to have an affordable housing plan. So, rather than go through the process on our own, we submitted the grant, so we can get the money to basically do it with someone else's money. We received the grant. The resolution was executed... Yep, yeah, the resolution was executed by the Board of Selectmen, so we'll be able to start thinking about how that will happen. Part of it has got some public outreach to it, so I don't know how we do that during COVID, but we have the whole fiscal year, so maybe we wait a little while and see if things calm down. The other thing I wanted to let you know about, I think we talked about, our office also submitted a lot SIP grant application, which is basically local transportation monies to Crog or South Wellington, that area. We found... Sorry?
No, I'm just saying, yeah, I, I understood that was happening.
Yep, so, we found out last week that our project was shortlisted. So, we now will be put before the policy board at Crog for basically a vote and hopefully to fund. So, that's, that's a million bucks that we will have for South Wellington.
That's exciting news. It's real exciting news.
Yeah, so, it's, and I haven't told Phil yet, but part of the project will fix the parking lot across from the school, and that is on the CIP plan, so if we can get this funded, we'll be able to take that project off the CIP plan, which will free up money for other things, so that, that should be a real positive if we can... We're one of two towns that was set in the category of a rural set-aside, so I'm hoping that, that will get funded, but we made the shortlist, which is good.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yep.
So, um, that's, that's pretty much all I have. If there's anything else or any concerns you have about Love's or, or anything else I talked about, I'm happy to discuss it further.
I'm good. Anybody else on the commission have any comments or concerns about what was on the agenda tonight?
No, not really. There's more than enough to think about for the, our next meeting, though.
Especially the signs. That's a lot of text there to plow through and think about.
So, everybody's comfortable?
I, I think one of the things, too, about South Wellington, I mean, there's been, you know, we had that study done. It's on the National Register. I think the, you know, the town, we've never had a downtown, and anything that the town can do through whatever means to facilitate better use of that village, I, I think is a positive. And we need to keep our eyes focused... I I think is a positive and we need to keep, uh, our eyes focused on that.
Yeah, so I'll certainly let you, the meeting for the policy board is in early September. So, um, I'll let you know, you know, certainly we'll know shortly thereafter if we've been, how how we rank, you know, as far as the funding. They get a big pot of money and then they start funding the projects from top to bottom. So where we fall, you know, hopefully being one of two projects in the rural set aside will increase our chances chances. But, uh, it'd be great if we could get a million bucks of someone else's money.
Hey, Mike, you had, Mike, does it require having a good plan as far as what you're going to spend the money on and everything?
So, um, my company, uh, at CHA, when we did, uh, when we did the application, we did a concept plan. We had our engineering team go out. So we already have a concept plan that we submitted that shows the parking lot, the sidewalks. We're adding some islands in front of the school with a pedestrian crossing so that people are safe when they cross the street to go to the school. We're going to fix the hand, the lack of handicap accessibility, fix the crosswalks that are non-existent. So we've submitted a concept level plan of that whole area, um, as part of that.
And I think there were, Mike, there, I think there was a, when they did that study for the National Register. I think they had done an economics, uh, study also that should be available from the town someplace.
Okay.
All right, that's that's good news.
Yep, so that's it. That's all I got.
Okay, it is, let's see, it is 8:10, meeting adjourned.
Good talking to everybody.
Yep, have a good night, everyone.